My first full year at Briar Cliff was...
Gretkin?
Here.
More?
Here.
Eight hundred and ninety-five dollars.
Here.
Waters?
Can we stand for a moment of silent prayer followed by the Pledge of Allegiance?
Wow.
Amen. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The interview for the Environmental Advisory Board is John Helms in here today. John Helms. Okay, we're going to move on then to the consent agenda, which is items three through eleven. You can consider that these items pass unanimously unless a separate roll call vote is called for by a council member. Come forward as I read them. If you want to speak on an item, if you want to speak on an item not on the agenda, come up under Citizen Concerns at the end. I'll move the consent agenda.
Second.
Three is the reading of the City Council minutes of March sixth, seventh, two thousand seventeen. Four is a resolution authorizing a police department to apply for a governor's traffic safety bureau grant. Five is a motion appointing Ruby Welter to the Yamanashi City Sister City Committee replacing Chad Robinson. Six is a resolution authorizing final payment to American Fence Company for fence improvement project at the Sioux Gateway Airport relating to street closures. A is a resolution temporarily closing sections of Pierce, Nebraska streets April sixth to allow for the loading and unloading of students attending the tolerance week event at the Orpheum Theater. B is a resolution temporarily closing sections of Pierce Street on April third to allow for the loading and unloading of tour buses for the John Doerr Variety Show at the Orpheum Theater. A are actions adopting construction of Pearl Street Park. B is a resolution approving plans and specs for the construction of the North Lewis Boulevard Water Main Project.
Mayor, City Council. Glenn Ellis, City Engineer, just want to bring your attention that the project number identified in the RCA and on the resolution is incorrect. It's a Scrivener's error. The project number should be six, seven, eight, two, C instead of six, eight, seven, two.
So do we need amendment for that?
No, it was transposed, just two numbers, so we'll correct it.
Okay.
Thanks, Glenn.
Nine are actions relating to agreements and contracts. A is a resolution approving an economic development assistance contract with IEDA and Cloverleaf Mighty Cold Properties and K-F, K-dash-F real estate. B is a resolution approving submission of the IEDA application for targeted jobs withholding tax credit program for C-two-C Express. C is a resolution approving a contract with SubserfCo for the West Seventh Street Reconstruction Project. I need to abstain on that one. D is a resolution approving renewal option number one with Dakota Traffic Services for a one-year period for the street pavement, painting, and striping project. Ten's approved. Yes.
Could I ask, back on C, the SubserfCo contract, that was just, um, just, I mean, but it was pretty close to the engineer's estimate, wasn't it?
Yes, Still Waterside Neighborhood Services Manager is about two point nine percent above.
Two point?
Nine, yep.
And when is the completion date?
Completion date, they have two hundred and fifteen working days, and we're estimating around probably August twenty eighteen.
What, two hundred and fifty?
Two hundred and fifteen working days.
That puts it out to?
Two years.
Years.
Two construction seasons.
They'll take all of that, you want it?
Yes.
With everything we're doing. Okay. Thank you.
Ten's approved. Checks issued for the reporting period February two thousand seventeen in the amount of eight million, one hundred and forty-two thousand, eight hundred and fifty-nine dollars and five cents. Eleven are board's commission and committee meeting. See the list, come forward if you have any questions. Anyone to be heard on any of those items. Are you calling the roll?
Yes.
Okay.
More?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Capron?
Aye.
Gretkin?
Aye.
Looks like we got it in alphabetical order finally. I said you got it in alphabetical order, therefore Waters was in front of me.
Ah, that was...
John Helms here, and come forward and tell us why you want to serve on the Environmental Committee.
Um, well, I'm an environmental scientist. My background is in aquatic science, marine science. I teach chemistry at Morningside College, and I feel like it's a way that I can really serve the community, and that's just sort of a way to apply my expertise a little bit.
Good.
How many openings do we have?
How many openings?
Oh.
One.
We're kind of getting a lot of Morningside guys here, I'm not sure. You're replacing a Briar Cliff person.
Even better.
One vacancy, one application.
Oh, sure, environmental advisor, yes, one vacancy.
Okay.
John, are there any projects you think about with the city or this board in particular, anything you're excited about that you would want to bring to the advisory committee?
Well, to be honest with you, having only been living in Sulan for a couple of years, I'm still kind of seeing what's going on here, getting a handle on what the environment, local environmental issues are and things like that, but, um, so I wouldn't say there's anything in particular, but I think Sioux City has a lot of potential for growth, and you know, I think it's important to keep a handle on how that impacts the environment and things like that, so.
Thank you.
Thanks for applying.
Yeah, thank you.
We'll return to the regular agenda. Twelve's a hearing in ordinance rezoning twenty-eight oh nine Floyd Boulevard and twenty-nine oh one Floyd Boulevard from zone classification BP to zone classification NC four petitioners black and blue development, P and Z recommends approval.
This item passed unanimously. We had a number of, which is the Associated Preliminary Platte, the issues that were covered by the speakers were concern about traffic, a possible through street from Glen Oaks to Floyd and the impact of that on the area, as well as there were a number of people spoke about environmental concerns about urban sprawl or less hills, and there was also concern about the two-to-one slopes that are part, that's part of the project.
I'll move it.
Second.
Anyone to be heard? Call the roll, please.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Capron?
Aye.
Gretkin?
Aye.
More?
Aye.
Anybody opposed to waiving the rules?
No.
No.
I'll move it. Does it waive the rules?
Second.
Waters?
Aye.
Capron?
Aye.
Gretkin?
Aye.
More?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Move second and third.
Second.
Capron?
Aye.
Gretkin?
Aye.
More?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Aye.
Thirteen's motion approving preliminary plot of Chestnut Hill petitioner black and blue development, P and Z even recommends approval. I'll move it.
Second.
Again, unanimously approved, same comments associated with this item.
No one to be heard?
And I thought, if I can say something, I thought Rick kind of addressed to the less hills or the natural prairie grass that he was going to try to incorporate that as well. Is that, was that what I saw in the meeting minutes?
I, uh, I, yeah, I think that's right.
I just think hopefully that addresses some of the concerns that were mentioned, it sounded like in the meeting.
Sure. You know, I do want, I might want to make a comment on that, though. This loss, low sales is not, it's not a byway. It's not protected work he's going to be building, so I don't think that it's probably an issue.
This has been a borrow pit before, so it's not like they're pristine less hills in the prairie.
It was a borrow pit for fifteen years, so, you know, I would, I don't know, I would guess that probably all that dirt that they're worried about is gone by now, so.
But you know, there's Floyd Boulevard to the east, and you know, it's kind of right in a little area with streets, urban streets all around it. But there were, the Sierra Club spoke, there were a number of people who did talk about that issue, as, as they should whenever there are less hills involved.
Well, that part's not, wasn't a protected area, so I don't think that there is much of an issue.
I don't think anyone said it was a protected area in any way.
Someday I would like them to address urban sprawl when you're doing an infill project, but not for today, okay? We'll just keep moving forward. Call the roll, please.
Gretkin?
Aye.
More?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Yes.
Waters?
Aye.
Capron?
Aye.
Anybody opposed to waiving statutory rule?
This is a motion.
That was a motion. I'll move second and third then.
Step into the motion. That's not an ordinance, mayor.
Well, I don't know, I'm going by what you guys got there.
Oh, is it on, sorry.
Sorry.
Now, we're on thirteen, are we not?
Yeah, and it's, it's calling for second and third.
Okay, sorry, that's, that's...
Okay, I'm just following your instructions, city clerk. I know, neither am I. I'm just following what you tell me to do. We'll move to...
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Capron?
Aye.
Greckin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Capron?
Aye.
Greckin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Capron?
Aye.
Greckin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Capron?
Aye.
Greckin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Capron?
Aye.
Greckin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Capron?
Aye.
Greckin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Capron?
Aye.
Greckin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
15's a resolution approving the final plat of Shirley Oaks addition of Sioux City
petitioner Al Fagan Shirley Sherman, P and Z recommends approval. I'll move it. Second.
Uh, this was, there was unanimous, this was unanimously 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 approved. There was one person who spoke who is in the, lives in the area.
Anyone to be heard? Call the roll, please.
Capron?
Aye.
Greckin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Anybody opposed to waiving the statutory rule?
Nope.
No.
Not an ordinance, that's why I asked the city attorney, and she said yes, but it's not an ordinance, is it?
I may have misunderstood your question.
Okay.
No, it's just a resolution.
Okay, that's what I thought, but.
Okay.
It's a resolution, correct, not a motion. Should have been a resolution.
For the preliminary plat, we have done that both ways, for approval of a preliminary, both by motion and by resolution, which, yeah, that's right.
I'm just following what I got here. They give me the short-term version that's turned into the long-term version today.
This is a, Nicole, this is a final, final plat, and all we need to do is address.
I think Councilman Moore was referring to item thirteen that we had previously done.
Yeah, just to clarify, item thirteen, it was approved, subject to staff's approval of crosswalks on the site, just to clarify.
That's what we approved too.
Okay.
Yes.
Just clarify for everyone who might be here.
Now, fifteen is just a resolution, so it doesn't need second, third.
Correct.
Thank you.
No additional reading.
Okay. Sixteen, staff request motion to defer hearing and resolution on the sale of land in the Donner Park renewal area to March twenty-seventh, two thousand seventeen. I'll move that.
Second.
Mayor and council, as you know, today was the day for submitting bids on this land. We did receive two bids. Deadline was at one o'clock today, so we ask that you defer this item to March twenty-seventh so that we can take a look at the proposals and bring back some recommendations to you.
That's, that's what your resolution is, so. There a second?
Second. Moore?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Capron?
Aye.
Greckin?
Aye.
Seventeen's a hearing and resolution adopting the annual plan for the section eight housing choice voucher program. Move it.
Second.
Won't make much difference with Trump's budget, but at least we feel good today, anyway. Call the roll.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Capron?
Aye.
Greckin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Eighteen's a hearing resolution approving plans and specifications for construction of the two thousand seventeen Discovery Parking Ramp Repair Project. I'll move it.
Second.
Waters?
Aye.
Capron?
Aye.
Greckin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Nineteen's a hearing resolution approving plans and specs for construction of the Tyson
Events Center Site Repair Project. I'll move it.
Second. And we're, we're doing alternate, alternate bidding on this, aren't we?
Yeah, there's an A and B, but we don't make that decision or determination right now, right?
Nope. Well, there's a good chance we won't get any bids, but they'll come in way over budget.
David Carney, Public Works Director, yeah, there's two alternates items, an A and a B, one to completely reconstruct the stairs, and then the other, the other one to do some sewer, uh, sewer repairs out in the corner of the parking lot.
So if we did it all, what would be the total?
If, no, the total would be over a million.
If you overme.
Either all.
Where's the storm sewer improvement?
Northeast corner of the parking lot.
Well, I don't know if you need storm sewer, but you'd at least need about three inches of asphalt tapered down to zero, because you're gonna have, that is one huge liability just waiting to happen. If you haven't been there, Nicole, water in that northeast corner gets about that thick and slopes, and the concrete has settled that much.
Is that back where they, where they haul in and haul out?
Yeah, but it's way, it's on the other side, but trust me, I know from experience, you can, you can do a flip back there, I can tell you that right now.
And that is one of the ultimate bid, I think that was like fifty-five thousand, they're estimating it at.
Yeah.
Are you talking where, like the Chamber parking lot, you're going back?
No, you're not that far, you're right up against the building where you're going in to the big garage doors, but we, all the coaches park over on that side, and it's, it'll get that thick in that northeast corner of that parking lot.
It's an incident waiting to happen, I know that.
I do too.
Also, the, um, uh, the stairways, that, you know, they're splitting apart.
Well, that's the, the, the base bid is to, to, to make a repair to those, the alternate bid of six hundred, that they estimate to be six hundred and forty-seven thousand would be a complete reconstruction. The base bid would, would get you fixed so they could be reopened, but the long-term fix, yeah.
They, they put a six-foot pole down there and still haven't found the bottom.
Yeah, there's a, there's a large void.
That's how, that's how bad the stairs is, coming, coming apart.
Pulling away.
Pulling away, and it's not getting better, it's getting worse.
Thanks, Dave.
Call the roll, please.
Capron?
Aye.
Greckin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Twenty's a hearing resolution approving plans and specs for construction of the Half Moon Booster Station Facility Improvement Project. I'll move it.
Second.
Greckin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Capron?
Aye.
Greckin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Capron?
Aye.
Greckin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Capron?
Aye.
Greckin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Capron?
Aye.
Greckin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Scott?
Don't we, this, isn't this an urban renewal area where you have to do a thirty-day notice? We already do it.
This has already been advertised, I believe.
Jeff Hanson, Community Development Operations Manager, the first step setting the hearing was on February sixth of this year.
Okay. Just like, nevermind with the chamber then. Call the roll.
Moore?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Capron?
Aye.
Greckin?
Aye.
Twenty-two is a hearing resolution accepting the proposal of overlooked developers for the purchase of the Donner Park Urban Renewal Area. I'll move it.
Second.
In the Donner Park.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Capron?
Aye.
Greckin?
Aye.
Moore?
Conflict of interest, I'm abstaining, thank you.
Twenty-three is a resolution approving a one-year contract extension with Hana Inc. to provide animal control services from July first, two thousand seventeen through July thirty, two thousand eighteen. I'll move it.
Second.
Please, 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 department.
Captain, please.
Anyone else want to be heard? Call the roll, please.
Scott?
Hold on one second.
Aye.
Hold on, hold on. I think next year that is gonna be up for bid, though.
Exactly.
So.
That was the recommendation, yes.
Okay, I just let Cindy know that, so.
And usually it was six-months notice of opening that, or open it at six months.
Yes, we would do it in the fall.
Yeah.
Exactly.
They've been, they've been doing a really good job for us.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
When do you bid the towing contract?
Um, we, we were gonna have a meeting again this week, we've already had one meeting, but, so, well, I'm, I'm not sure if we're gonna do a pre-bid, or, but we're gonna do that real soon, yes.
Exploration is June thirtieth, if I'm sure.
Yes.
It's June thirtieth, is that what you said? You know, we should probably get on top of these things instead of waiting for the last minute if we're gonna bid, bid these things out. I mean, we're, we're into March.
Well, I think we're right on time for the towing contract.
Okay.
The animal control requires a little bit more, because what's required, but.
Okay, well, that's.
The towing contract, we're right in, we're right on time and right on schedule.
Okay, all right.
Thanks, Lisa.
All I know is I've had some issues. They're always right there on the spot, and they defend.
We'll talk about your issues later.
Not those issues, wild animal issues. Wild animal issues.
Again, we'll talk later.
Wild, you know, deer.
Call the roll.
Rar.
Hi.
Buccaneaus.
Aye.
Aye.
All kinds of animals.
Moore, did you want to vote? You didn't?
I already, aye.
Okay. Twenty-five is the resolution approving a warranty deed for the property located. What's that? Oh, resolution approving a special warranty deed for the property located at 801 Fourth Street for the Siouxland Chamber Foundation. Move it.
We skipped twenty-four.
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 Oh, I'm sorry, twenty-four. Resolution approving amendments to the 801 Fourth Street.
Second.
I'll move it.
Mayor and Council, we're going to present some information on the proposed hotel project. Actually, the next three items on your agenda relate to that, so we can go ahead and present it, I guess, initially here, but the first two relate to the fact that, since the convention center is owned by the, technically owned by the Siouxland Chamber Foundation, the steps to create the site for a hotel require mending the agreement between the Chamber Foundation and the, and the city, and then accepting a deed for the site where the hotel would be. So that's the first two steps. The third step is to start the thirty-day process, so. Bruce and Les Kinseth are here today too, to answer your questions, and Erica is here as well. Renee and I'll just kind of get things started here, so the, with just a little bit of information. The challenge that we faced, we started working on a couple of years ago, was the fewer events and decreased revenue at the convention center that we've kind of seen over the years. As you recall, we did a study, Hyundai Strategic Partners Hotel Consulting and Convention Center Consulting Firm out of Chicago did a study in which, to summarize it, basically said you need to do two things to, to improve the performance of the convention center. First, you need a quality branded hotel with at least a hundred and fifty rooms adjacent to or connected to the convention center close by, and you need to look at offering some type of flexible ballroom space, more usable space for those kinds of activities that typically take place in a ballroom. At the same time, we were fortunate that we had the opportunity through the Iowa Reinvestment District Program, good timing, I think, for, to look at a project like this, because that program offers the ability to capture the state hotel motel and sales taxes in addition to the local taxes for up to twenty years for projects that qualify. And as you know, we had three, three dynamic anchor projects, the Ag Center, the Virginia Square Project, and the Convention Center Hotel Project that we presented to the state back in 2015, receiving provisional approval in early 2016, and now awaiting final approval, depending on the finishing up of these projects and getting them ready to go. We think this creates a positive economic impact in the twenty-five acres that are part of that, part of that district. One of the keys, per our hotel consultant, is to improving convention center performance is, is an improved user experience, both in a hotel and in the convention center. So, the proposal that we have to talk to you today about is a new five-story courtyard by Marriott Hotel with, with a hundred and fifty rooms required. Would have a versatile pre-function space that would connect the hotel to the convention center, again, providing that convenience and good user experience. Would add restrooms as well, something that's been needed for many years on, on that end of the convention center, and accessible through that pre-function space. To address the ballroom space, we, we really thought initially about the idea of adding ballroom space, but cost considerations kind of prohibit that, so looked at the potential to renovate Gallery C, which is the one on the east end, into that type of space, still being able, as Erica can address, still being able to open it up for many of the larger events that take place in the, in the convention center today and that have been, we've gotten used to having in the convention center for many years. And then, need to address the ability to have convenient parking, parking accessible for the hotel users and people in that area. So, this next site plan shows you, and Renee can do this, we're going to try to show you the general locations. Of course, none of this is completely final by any means, but as you can see, that's the site for the, for the hotel. The pre-function space would be in between the two, kind of providing another entrance on that. There's already an entrance, they've been enhancing the entrance to the convention center. The blue there would be the restrooms. This also shows some potential additional storage space that would be along there, which is an option that could be looked at. That would be most of, but not quite all of Gallery C, because there's a, there would be a wall there, because there's a, that's where the garage, where the entrance is, where you bring things through the garage door. And then in the brown space shows the potential area that could be used for additional parking.
How, how do you get into the garage space? Because it appears, is the parking ramp not tied right into the hotel?
No, there's a, that would keep the drive-through there, would, would stay there. Yellow is not all building there, that just shows the space, so you, you can see there is, at an angle there, there's a access, so it's very important to keep the ability to drive trucks in and out of that.
Between the two, right? Is, was my understanding?
Yeah, there'd be access.
Between the yellow and the brown, there will be access?
Correct, so.
Also, on the east side, northeast side, is that going to be an opening as well, or no?
Yes, that would be, there'd be a drive-through there from Virginia Street all the way over to the convention center, like you do now, so that you could get to the loading docks and also to that garage door to get in and out.
And so what, the parking ramp doesn't tie directly in, it's a skywalk?
Parking ramp would, no, you'd walk across from the parking ramp into the hotel.
It's open air, not sky.
So they're not tied together at all?
Not physically, no. They, they would be, you'd, you'd drop somebody off and park the car and walk back, I guess. Lastly, we have a, kind of a rendering of what it might look like. Of course, we have not designed the, just looked at some preliminary concepts for the convention center, so would not necessarily have that archway and look like that, just something that the architect, Kinseth Architect suggested might be a nice way to do it. Could, could be done in different ways, so. But some of the benefits of this plan would be to enhance the marketing and management efficiencies of the overall convention center, marketing the hotel and convention center together would bring additional events and revenue into the convention center. Again, increasing hotel and motel and sales taxes, especially important here because we can capture not only the local but the state portion of those taxes for many years, and then we think this would strengthen downtown as a regional destination, both helping the businesses in downtown, other hotels, and also just in general, strengthening Sioux City as a regional destination for business. So, that's kind of an overview of the, of the proposal. I would ask Bruce and Les to make any comments they'd like to make at this time about.
Marty, before we do that, can you, can you go back, please, to your first slide? I have just a couple of questions. Can you go back to the very first?
The first slide?
And, yeah, maybe this is obvious to everybody else, but the challenge, the fewer events and decreased revenue, are you saying, so that translates into convention center costing the taxpayers a lot of money to?
And maybe Erica would like to talk to that, but, I mean, I mean, I think that pretty strong evidence that the lack of a hotel, lack of a branded quality hotel, obviously there's a number of hotels in the area, but has hurt the ability to attract events and conventions.
Yeah, Erica Newton with the Events and Facilities Department. The trouble that we've had over the course of the past probably six or seven years is that, due to all of the different management shifts that have happened at what used to be the Hilton, connected by Skyway to the convention center, it's kind of built up as a reputation of not being a good quality hotel, regardless of what improvements have been made recently. I'm talking about over the course of the past seven or eight years where it switched hands multiple times. And so we have a lot of conference planners out there that don't want to come back because they remember the hotel when it wasn't in great shape. And so we're not even being allowed to bid on some events because they don't want to have that experience again for their guests. So we hope that with the addition of this hotel, that we can continue to attract those folks back, which will help all hotels really in town.
Go to, go to your next slide, and thanks, Erica.
Chris and I have a question. Can you name five conventions we missed?
I'd have to look. I can't off the top of my head. I know there are probably, there probably are at least that many, but I'd have to check in with Brent Stockton, who does that day-to-day for us now.
Mayor, when you say missed though, does that, I mean, if, if we can't even bid on them?
Yeah, a couple of them we couldn't even bid on. There are more, though, that we're not getting.
That's why I want to know who they are.
Okay.
Do you spend five to eight million dollars for five conventions? Is, is, you know, what's, what's the economic impact of those five to eight we missed? That's what I was asking.
I'll check into it.
And I had a question about the Hyundai, the way that the study, the way that you kind of sold it here is that it's looking specifically at the convention center revenue? Is that true, or was it looking at like the capacity of the community to hold another hotel? Was it focused on the revenue generating for the convention center, or was it focused on the community saying, no, it can withstand another hotel option?
I know it was focused on the, on the convention center. I think they looked at the whole market, though. One of the requirements of the Iowa Reinvestment District is to show that the feasibility of each element of that, so both in terms of the Ag Center, the Virginia Square Project, or the original application. So, we hired Hyundai to do that. We'd actually already been talking to him about the situation with the convention center, but it dovetailed nicely into the opportunity provided by the Iowa Reinvestment District. So, he geared that study towards the feasibility of adding hotel, a hotel to the convention center and, and what else was needed to make the convention center successful. So, it was very much geared towards the convention center, although he, obviously they looked at the entire hotel market in Sioux City, and I'm sorry, Alex, you probably didn't see a copy of that because you're, you're new, new here, but we can give you a copy of that.
Because that was just my question. I just wanted to make sure, yeah, that the market can hold, or, you know, that it's needed.
Yes, that was the intent. There was also an economic impact study that was done for the whole district as well. So, all, all those studies were required by the district process, which was a competitive process, and, and they wouldn't have, I don't think they would have allowed us to get this far into it and chosen as one of the cities without having good, good data to back that up.
Could you please go to the next slide that you had? Well, either that one or the one that showed the map of the Gallery C, the, the ballroom. It's my understanding the ballroom, the, the new ballroom, that'll still be separate part, that'll be part of the convention center at all times?
Yes.
And the accounting, all the numbers, everything will go to the convention center?
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yes.
So, so who's making the improvements to the ballroom?
The city, the, the hotel itself would be financed and, and built by, constructed by Kinseth. The other improvements would be done by the city, using, utilizing revenue from the Reinvestment District.
Okay. And then we have a lot of moving parts on this? I mean, the reinvestment?
A fair number of moving parts.
Yes. And so if, if for some reason, council would decide this is maybe not what we want to go for, then the other, the other parts would fall as well? Is that correct, by saying that accurately?
It would be difficult to, to.
So the Ag Center can't stand on its own? The other?
Well, it's, it's really meant to be a, a single district with the revenues coming in, it's been approved and presented, you know, as, as a district, and the revenues are, it's up to the city to distribute the revenue to different projects, but we've kind of been working on that for the, you know, for quite a while now. You know, I think the plan works, but, yeah.
Councilmember Moore, to more directly answer your question, there's substantial contribution from the Reinvestment District in the hotel motel sales tax that goes into the Equestrian Center. So, to the extent there's not a new hotel generating that revenue, that creates a significant shortfall in the Equestrian Center project. So, to your point, yes, it, the moving parts all rely on one another.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Marty.
I did want to give a chance for Bruce and Les to, to speak today, and I just preface it by saying that, I guess I forgot to say this back in earlier slide, but we did, we did have, Hyundai assisted us with an RFP process, RFQ/RFP, identified a number of prospective hotel developers back over, about a year and a half ago, and eventually they, there were site visits and interviews, and we ended up identifying Kinseth as the best prospect to, to work with on this project. They are Iowa-based and have, I think, about sixty-five different hotels in, in their portfolio, so bring a lot of experience to the table, so. Say a few words.
Good afternoon. My name is Bruce Kinseth, and I'm with my brother Les Kinseth. Les is the president of a family-held Kinseth Hospitality Companies, company-owned enterprise. We're in business with another brother and another sister who are not here with us tonight, but they certainly would like to have been. Les and I are here representing the family and the company, and we are really a second-generation hotel and management and operations company based in North Liberty, Iowa. We operate hotels in pretty much every city of any substance in the state of Iowa with the exception of Sioux City. And so, we're telling, we were excited two years ago when the RFP came out, that we were able to, you know, apply and be part of the RFP process to the city, and we're very, very excited to say that we were selected by the city to at least entertain our proposal. We've spent a lot of time, effort and money developing plans, specifications, applying and working, Sheriff, if you'd like to, that we've done and developed a number of Marriott properties throughout the Midwest. We have another Marriott Courtyard in Ankeny, Iowa, that actually the city participated on a project there with us as well, and it, it's been a great, great property there in Ankeny, Iowa. And so, we're excited to be here and have this proposal out here in front of you today. It seems like it was just yesterday that we applied for the RFP and was actually looking at it almost two years ago, or even a little bit longer than two years ago, that we were able to get into the discussions for the development of this property, and we think it's going to be a great fit for the city of Sioux City. I think Marriott Courtyard and the Marriott family of brands will be a tremendous addition to the city overall, not just for the convention center but for the city and the business in the city as well. And I know it'll be a great connection with the convention center. I know it'll contribute very well to the convention center's overall appeal for meeting planners from the state of Iowa, from the regional area, and I, and we're very excited to be able to, to be here today and, and hopefully get this approved and keep the process moving. Thank you.
Let me, let me ask you this. How, how solid is a twenty-year commitment for Marriott? I mean, twenty years is a long time.
Well, I signed a personal guarantee that Marriott would have a hotel here for the next twenty years, and Les did as well. Marriott, that's what they do. They want to hire, or not hire, excuse me, enter into a license agreement for a franchise with quality operators like Kinseth Hospitality, who will maintain and build the Marriott Courtyard. And you don't know this about Kinseth, but we're a long-term owner-operator of hotels. We have hotels that Leslie ran when he was a kid, that we still own and operate today in Clearlake, Iowa. So we're long-term investors, long-term participants in the city of Sioux City, and we will probably own this hotel twenty years from right now. Yeah, obviously, there's no guarantees that somebody wouldn't come and say, oh, we'll pay you triple what it's worth. That never happens anyway, but we would consider that, of course. But we plan to be here for the long haul and operate this hotel. We certainly, on day one, when we open this hotel, will put money into a reserve account so that eight years from now, when this hotel needs a renovation refresh, we will have the money to make sure that this asset continues to the same quality that it was built to, which Marriott, as you know, is the world's leading hospitality company and the world's leading hotel branding company, and they're very exacting and very demanding on the construction and design specifications, everything from the fixtures in the bathroom to the doors, because they know what it takes to make sure that a hotel stays in the top-quality condition for the long haul. So, you know, twenty, now, they couldn't, you know, this hotel will be a Marriott Courtyard in twenty years. You know, it could be something else. It could go to a Marriott Hotel or something, but it's built to Marriott Courtyard standards in their newest prototype that they have, which is a generation, the sixth generation of Marriott Courtyards.
Is the, the updating or renovations that you spoke of, is that about it in every seven, eight-year period?
Yes, yes.
Or can you define it that way?
No, that's, well, Marriott has that requirement, as, but I can tell you, just as a practical matter of operating a lot of different hotels, hotels start to wear out in seven years, eight years, nine years, depending on the quality of carpet that you had, quality of, of wallpaper and things like that, and you need to go in and refresh it seven years to eight years to nine years. Marriott will kind of have it in a range there, just based on the quality of their scores. And then in fourteen years, they have a whole set of requirements new, you know, relative to air conditioner replacement and things like that. So, that's part of their license agreement that you signed, and we also put money aside based on our lending agreement that we will have with the lender on this hotel, which we've gotten financial commitments from lenders already, and they own a money aside each and every year, so that seven or eight years from now, we've got the money it's going to need to make sure that this hotel stays in good quality condition.
Let me ask you this. I'm not sure I'm going to ask it the right way, so you can maybe help me with the wording, but, so you've been, you obviously have really studied this area, you, you know the, not only where the hotel would be going. I wondered, what's your take on the parking? Is it sufficient parking? Is there, is there room for expansion on parking? I mean, it just seems that we need to address that issue specifically, because parking, I mean, we just need to have parking available, not only for the hotel patrons but for the, the whole general area that, that we're looking at with the convention center.
Well, I couldn't agree with you more, and that's something of discussion that we've had quite a bit, actually, with Marty and Renee, a little bit to talk about it, because for a hotel, we need one hotel space for every hotel room. Now, that trend has kind of went down a little bit with more flights and people traveling together, but that's what, what our minimum need is out of the parking garage, you know, so anything that you guys would have discussions on in addition to that, I think, you know, all the better for, for you guys in the city, I think. But for our needs, we have to have news. And there is some redundancy of our parking with convention center, because a lot of the people that are going to be going to the ballroom for a business meeting or something, or the convention center, there's an overlap there, you know what I mean? And that could be half the cars or more at any given time. It could be the whole hotel if there was a, let's call it the, the Iowa Concrete Pavers Association had a meeting. They might rent the entire hotel, so if they're in the ballroom, they're in the hotel, you know, and they, they overlap. But, and there definitely is some overlap with day users in the parking lot, because a lot of our users will come, stay, and let's say they're at, out making sales calls in the immediate area, and they're a business traveler, they're gone. So there is day spots, a lot of day spots could be open at any given time.
But if you have a hundred and fifty rooms, that'd be a hundred and fifty parking spaces. Would, would I be able to park in that parking garage if, if I don't have a room? I mean, would I be able to park there and go to the ballroom for some event? Or is that going to be such a controlled environment that you, that you'd have to be a patron of the hotel? You see what I'm saying?
I do understand. I mean, certainly, as a hotel, we need to be able to guarantee our patrons a place to park, and whether we would have overflow parking in another location or not, if there was somebody else in there, clearly, there'll be people that will come to business meetings in the ballroom that will park in there, you know, and then will enter the ballroom through the hotel parking. But we do need to, and a hundred, the one-to-one ratio that Marriott specifies and we know is needed, does account for some of that kind of overlap. But I think parking is a very, very important part of our discussion, no question about it.
Okay, because I, yeah, I think we want to take a hard look at that, Marty, because of the, I don't know how many total spaces we have now, but there's going to, I don't know what the net's going to be. I mean, we have to figure that out, I guess.
I agree. We all agree, I think, that parking's the biggest challenge here.
You know, don't count on our other parking ramp that we have across the street from, from the convention center. I mean, that's, it's going to be actually closer than, than the parking lot that we have up here in the corner.
And I think we have to make sure that people utilizing the ballroom or the convention center for different things are utilizing that parking ramp as well, because I share your concern, that I think we need to be thinking about, okay, so there's a big weekend and the hotel does sell out, but we still have people that want to go to the promenade or want to park there, or, you know, go down to Fourth Street and maybe then find a spot on the street. So we need to accommodate that as well, but if the hotel's sold out and taking every single parking space, you know what I mean, then, then it's going to run into issues. And so I want to make sure that we are offering adequate parking. I think for conventions, I mean, you can definitely say that. I think that that parking ramp is right there as well, and the spot right across, or the lot, the city-owned lot right across from the convention center. I understand those things. But yeah, I mean, I think we need to take a hard look and make sure that, because for instance, what is it, the craft fair this weekend, right? Craft fair. And so if, if the hotel was sold out and the people coming for the craft fair, I mean, some are going to be coming from out of town, but a lot are going to be coming from in-town or in the area and not spending the night. So if you have a sold-out hotel and all of those spaces are taken, we're going to have to find a way to make sure that people know, hey, use this parking ramp because this one's probably full. And I don't want the general public getting upset or not coming to our craft fair because of that.
Absolutely.
I still have a question about parking, because I'm about as good at backing the trailers as nobody, but in this whole parking lot, you're not going to have enough room to go down and turn around. A guy coming there for a craft show, backing his trailer up is not going to have room to go down there, turn around. So you're going to ask that guy to back his trailer all the way down there, which, you know, I'm sure that there are a lot better people than me that back up trailers, but.
Their architect looked at a number of different configurations to make sure that truck access would be able to get into that, to that garage door area. I think it's set back enough that they thought they could do that, but.
If he backs all the way down, he's not going to drive down, like now, today, a guy can go down that parking lot, he can come up the other side, and he can back right in. That's a lot easier to do with the semi than it is to back all the way down, Marty. That's what I'm trying to tell you. And then his trailer's going to be cocked in there. And that's why you're showing this, I'm sure, as a closed environment, because that door's going to be open while you try to unload things from a truck. It, it makes the convention center door there very impractical. I'm just telling you that. I don't know how the hotel plans on, where they plan on loading for their food and beverage, or do you have any?
There is another entrance to the hotel, you know, back there, and probably a lot of, a lot of, there's, that orangey's part, there's other places you can actually park cars and things like that. It, it doesn't show up real well in the plan, but we would be more than happy to have our architect work with you guys to make sure that everything works the way everybody wants it to work, because for us as a hotel, it's so important for the convention center to be successful. We, we want to do everything possible that the convention center can absolutely unequivocally maximize its revenue potential. So we don't want to do anything design-wise that would hurt that potential for revenue, and we totally understand the need for trailers and tractor trailers and things like that, to be able to get there to unload big stuff, not just big trucks, but little trucks and medium trucks, and I don't know if that doesn't show it better. It kind of shows a lot more of the ability, I think you can actually, if I recall from the architect conversations, and we, and weren't happy to bring the architects and have them work directly with the team here to make sure it works good, but I think a, a person could turn around, or Les, you know?
No way.
Well, I don't know if they could turn around. They, they, they did have a, a, a semi-trailer superimposed over, over one.
Yeah, but he's backing all that way down.
Well, it would be, yeah.
And one of the largest revenues for the convention center this year, Erica, is the rent you charged Convoy of Hope, which was fair market rent, which now, I realize every two years you can't stop progress, but you've rendered that building now useless for that, one of the, one of the things you collect the rent on, because they do things outside in the parking lot all day. Erica, they park two semis out there, you don't have room for that anymore. They put all kinds of garbage containers out there. That, that's done now. I'm not trying to be critical, but this kills things that do generate revenue now. So, where, where are your employees going to park? On ground level there?
Well, the one-to-one ratio that Marriott has actually accounts for employees to park in the same spot. Now, it doesn't mean we couldn't ask the employees, let's say there was a big group in the convention center to park in a different lot or something like that, but generally, our one-to-one ratio includes employees parking. It just happens to be so many ho, people come, there's two people in a, like Les and I came today in one car, you know, we come in one car, we rent two different hotel rooms. That are just. That are just tremendous amount. Some people will fly in, you know, things like that.
But do you visualize this as public parking? That I could go there and go to the movie and park there? Or do you visualize that this is going to be pretty much your parking ramp?
Depending on how is the way, you know, obviously, that's you guys' decision. I'd say how many stalls you want to have in that particular garage. We need the one-to-one ratio. I mean, I can tell you that, that that's imperative for us. And I know, like, we're doing a parking agreement like in Iowa City on a hotel we're building, and we don't, we don't have 100% use of every spot or anything like that we have. But they are guaranteeing us so many stalls for the hotel, you know what I mean? So there will be some opportunity for people to park there other than our patrons, especially, you know, 1 o'clock in the afternoon. 2 o'clock in the afternoon, you could charge for parking conceivably. Somebody pulls in there with a credit card, and I'm not a parking expert by any means, so I probably need a parking expert exactly. But I just know what we need for the hotel. But I know there'll be a lot of times where it'll be empty. Especially on weekends sometimes, a Marriott courtyard generally, unless there's a convention going on, is a hotel brand that's structured towards the commercial traveler and the business traveler and things like that. So if just general courtyard, America is always full Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and a little quieter on the weekends, which happens to be the time when the people might come to the, to the movie theater. But I mean, we are wide open for further discussion, you know. I know we've had numerous that's about the parking garage, so...
The reason I'm asking is I think our budget, preliminary budget was for 140 stalls.
That's correct.
Sounds like you're going to take them all. Or need them all, yeah.
The parking garage is two levels.
It's currently laid out.
Right. Again, we've talked about, we've used that number because it's kind of a minimal number. But I think that we need to talk about it being larger or other solutions to the parking. And that's, I mean, that's clearly been the concern throughout this, our discussion in recent months. And it's something we need to look at, talk with Bob about it, and...
But right now, it's two levels.
Right now, it's just generally envisioned as a two-level ramp.
I think we're getting a little in the weeds here. It hasn't even been designed yet, so we can't say if it's two levels.
No, but here's what I don't want to get. I don't want to get down the road with these guys, and no disrespect to them. And that's what I'm trying not to do. And all of a sudden, we've got a $2.2 million parking ramp that balloons to $5 million. That's what I don't want to see. And then we've, then we've got to figure out how we're going to do that. And I, I mean, I'm just going to tell them the truth. $5 million for a parking ramp, I'd sooner have it at the Tyson than I would for your hotel. I'm a little selfish there. We don't have enough room for conventions and conferences and concerts and that. So if I had my druthers, that's where I would build it. But that's just me, so...
I think we're just stressing over too much here because we have a parking lot already. You know, I mean, that's our backup, for God's sake.
You can't overlook what Bruce said. You don't build the parking structure for the weekend where you're going to have a boat show or a craft show. People that want to go those find a place because if you go down there now, I bet you it's 80% empty. So five days out of the week, there's going to be plenty of parking down there. It's the, it's the weekend, big events that the courtyard by Marriott isn't going to have high occupancy, unless they're having an event there and it would be full anyways. But we do have, we have about 1,100 parking stalls and two ramps on the other side of the convention center that if you look at this map are actually closer to an event if you're not staying at the hotel.
Where I was going with my line of question is there's nothing to prevent the parking garage from being a third floor or fourth floor or fifth floor.
Just, just the cost.
Can it be higher than the hotel? Well, I know the cost, but I mean, can it be higher than, can you have a parking garage that's taller than the hotel?
You could.
That's where I'm coming from. I think that's just a basic fundamental question.
We absolutely could have it taller than the hotel because it does start a little bit higher than the first floor of the hotel.
Yes. Okay. That's why I was asking. I just wondered. Other than the cost, which will be huge, I just wonder if there's anything that prevents us from that.
Okay, well, thank you folks very much. Appreciate your...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else be heard? I'm going to go back to the motion now.
We're on 24 then, right?
Yeah. The motion is a resolution approving amendments to the sale and lease agreements with the Sulan Chamber Foundation property located at 801 Fourth Street. Call the roll, please.
Gabrin?
Aye.
Greckin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
25 is a resolution approving a special warranty deed for property located at 801 Fourth Street from the Sulan Chamber Foundation. I'll move it.
Second.
Greckin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
At 800 block of Fourth Street.
I'll move it.
Second.
Moore?
Aye.
Scott?
No.
Waters?
Aye.
Gabrin?
Aye.
Greckin?
Aye.
It's now time for citizen concerns. Any citizen concerns, please come forward.
Thank you.
To the mic.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Seeing none, we'll go to council concerns.
Just one reminder, I received an email from Rose Cuney on behalf of Mary Trellia and the Wine on a Dime fundraiser. In case you all didn't know, it's...
Saturday night.
Set for Saturday night, March 18th, at the country celebrations on Hamilton Boulevard. And I asked her, or she asked me if I would remind you, and I told her I would. And to thank you for the city's support on this, their fundraiser for Mary Trellia, so thanks.
What's going on tonight? I thought you'd mentioned that.
There is an excellent semifinals round of the Women's NAIA 2017 National Basketball Tournament. Four teams, all number one seeds, so there are going to be good games, both of them. Start at 6 o'clock, followed by 8 o'clock. So a couple of good games and championship game tomorrow night at 7:00. And if you can't make it, I know they're streaming them on ESPN3, so...
Well, the only thing I have to add to that is Mayor Scott has sponsored one of the top teams, Concordia. So if anybody wants to root for a team, that'd be a good one to root for.
And only GPAC left?
Yes.
I told Cory, I told Cory Wester, you've probably got to root for your sixth least favorite GPAC team, but you got to root for them at least.
Yeah, exactly.
Frofro.
Exactly how I feel.
We disposed of your Maroon Chiefs early in the process, so you got to root for the dogs now.
Rebuttal.
Yeah, exactly. I was pretty bummed about it.
Anything, Alex?
Um, no specifically, right? Well, actually, I have a question, though, about the Mary Trellia, because I got a table as well. Do we have a table, though, that we're trying to fill?
Yes, the city does, yeah.
Okay. And do we know how many people are going or how many? Because I'll invite more people that we can make sure we fill it.
Sandy has that information.
I'll text Sandy about it.
Yeah.
She's gone.
She's gone. She'll be back Fri- she'll be back Friday.
So we're going to wait till Friday? Because I didn't know anything about it, but that's okay.
Your calendar opened.
I'm going. I just don't know if I even need to.
I'll coordinate that with council member Waters because I filled the table, but I need to make sure.
Oh, you filled the table?
Well, I was asked to fill the table.
Yes.
He's got an entourage, so...
As long as you've got the table full. Don't worry about Karen and I, that's okay. No, not now. You got her filled.
No, no, I think there might be two openings. I just happen to have two openings.
As long as you and Sandy got it handled.
I was just doing what I was asked to do.
Okay.
And I appreciate it. Thank you.
Well, thank you.
And thank you.
I got to look at this button again.
Be kind. She's kind, Mayor. She's kind.
I can take a hint, Dan. I didn't know that one no vote was, put me in that kind of jeopardy. Anything for you?
We didn't have a snow emergency.
Well, because it's going to get 60 and it's going to melt this week and...
Everything went well?
Yeah.
And tonight, we'll spread it out in the middle of the street and pour thousands of taz and then it'll contaminate the rivers and all that. But what the heck, that's the way we should do business.
What happened to choose kind again?
Well, why can't we figure out how to haul the snow away rather than load it with salt? Because we got a lot of salt left over.
We do. I figured after all the snow, we'd probably be down to hardly anything.
No.
That's all I have.
John Newmember, talk to Dave. Dave's over there.
Bob, what about you? Would you like anything to add to this?
Not now, no.
We've got two open seats Saturday night.
I've got to get to the Concordia Bulldog basketball game, so I'll move. We adjourn.
Second.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Gabrin?
Yep.
Greckin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye. You in? Wine on a dime?
We have enough attorneys in the room today? We haven't had attorneys in the room today?